We're recently recognized at the new Acme Store in Green for her outstanding work. Olivia received some autographed artwork and a Christmas ornament from Don Drum. Nice. And the Hat and Art Program received a check for $250 for Mrs. Worowski to use for purchasing art supplies. Outside of school, Olivia enjoys taking dance lessons and spending time with her family. Welcome, Olivia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you introduce who came with you today?
My mom, Colleen, my sister Jay, my dad, Jim, and our principal, Mr. Blunt.
Nice. Very nice. Do you want to show them your bag? I would love to see that. So this is the bag that she decorated, and there were pictures of it online, and you got to vote on artwork. Did she do anything else? You want to tell us anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. So we talked about if you want, you can stay for a little bit longer and watch the cross-country teams get their awards and listen to the board, or you can feel free to go, especially if you have a lot of homework. So don't feel like you have to stay. Okay, dance class. Absolutely. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Good job.
And there's a lovely check that's for the art department, too. All right. Now it's time for our community and school reflections. Who would like to start? Go ahead.
I'll start. Just want to make a quick comment about the Capitol Conference. We were all attendance at the Capitol Conference, the annual conference where school board members get together. Went to many breakout sessions, but the one I wanted to share mostly from the Ohio Career Technical Education and just some stats on career tech that a lot of people might not be aware of and sort of shine some light on how career tech can help a student get through and go on to secondary, you know, post-secondary education, if you will, into college. But some of the statistics they provided us were, and the one, two that are most impressive to me, 98% of students who are in career tech graduate from high school, and these are Ohio statistics. So, you know, obviously, if you get into a career technical program, more likely to see the light on the other end of the four-year tunnel, if you will. And 60% of those students obtain further education. So the old thought that career tech is the end of your education, and then you use that vocation to move forward is not even close to being true anymore, if it ever was true. So, like I said, I just wanted to share that. And one thing that they shared with us at that breakout session was they gave an award to their, what they felt was the legislator in the state of Ohio who did the most for career tech in the year 2013. That happened to be Representative Cliff Rosenberger. And if anybody follows what happened in the State House, he was just elected to the Ohio House as the chair, president of the Ohio House for this year. So I think that bodes well for career tech in Ohio because of what he has done, what the governor would like to see, some of, you know, what buttons he's pushing as well. So I just thought I'd share that.
I'll share one thing, too. There was a lot that we were attending this past week, a lot of different good sessions. But one that really stuck out to me was Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy. And it was William L. Phyllis, who was the executive director, and he spoke, and it was so, it was sad, but it was interesting how our tax dollars are being used by these charter schools, and really, there's no output that we're getting. Our kids are going into those charter schools, but they're really not coming out there. There's no statistics that come from these charter schools. They had mentioned, and I won't mention the name of the charter school, but there was the executive director there that made $4 million as a director of this charter school and got $20,000 in bonds and mutual funds. And that's, I mean, that's a little odd, and that's all of our money that's supposed to be going for the kids to become educated, and we're not getting that money. So I wanted everybody to be aware and look at the, follow the charter schools. And I'm not saying all charter schools are bad, but I'm just saying in our area, they talked about in the Ohio only, and they were talking about a couple that were specifically from here. Didn't say the names, but they were actually talking about it because he did mention a couple of names that were connected with some of the schools here. And so it's just, to me, a little sad that our tax dollars go there and we're not getting anything out of them, and in particular, that our kids aren't really getting the education that they should get, and the dollars aren't used effectively like they should be used to help our students. So I just wanted to give a little bit of attention to that because I thought it was very, very important, and it was saying how the fiscal drained from public schools and that money is just being wasted. And people should think about this when they're looking at all these different schools, if they want to take a kid out of maybe a public school or some other school district and put them into a charter. So they need to investigate before they put them in those schools. So with that, I hope people will be conscious of that and doing their research and go from there. Thank you.
You were very nice in your comments. Reverend Walker?
I just want to highlight Common Core. One of the groups was dispelling myths about Common Core. I just want to highlight how did Common Core come into being, because many times we blamed the federal government, particularly Obama, President Obama administration, and other federal agencies for creating this, the Common Core. So the Common Core was created by nation's governors, educational commissioners, and through representative organizations of the National Governors Association, and the Council of Chief State School Officers. And states came together and came up with what they felt would work and be a common core that all the states could work with. The curriculum is different in each place. It's a local control. It's not controlled by the federal government. It's not controlled by the state. Our curriculum is locally controlled. And for that, there was a session on Common Core, Uncommon Solutions, and our school district down in Middletown uses the curriculum. They demonstrated that, how they can use the curriculum, the standards to help us succeed. And I want to encourage us to continue to, as a board and as the OSBA and others, to encourage Common Core and not to be afraid of seeking excellence, because that's what our children need, not only now, but as they move forward, if it's education or if it's in trade, they still need to have standards and move towards excellence. And the segue into that was the assessments, and several of us were in that workshop. And one of the things I wanted to emphasize there was, and our assistant superintendent, Dr. McWilliams, when we meet with her, was right on target, looking at the new assessments for graduation rate, how students can graduate. There will be a test with, I think, seven or eight items. They can make up to 18 points on that test. The points can vary. If you are gifted and strong young people in math and do well, you can get all of your, a lot of your points in that, but if you aren't, you can get other points in other areas. And if you really are pushing right now, whatever test they come up with, if it's the SAT or ACT, if you do extremely well in that, get a 21 or 22, whatever that benchmark will be, when it comes time to take that final exam, your senior year, if you pass that, ACT or SAT, doesn't matter what you get, on those tests, you've already met your graduation requirement. So there'll be a lot of different ways to succeed and not have the kind of pressure that we've had as it relates to the OTG.
OTG.
OTG, right. The graduation exam that we have now that will be phased out. Sorry about that. So, but of course, our students who are in place now will have to take that. This is the freshman group that will have the new exam. So it's a lot of things. There's a lot of tension. There's a lot of new things. How are you going to take the test? Is it going to be paper tests, or if it's going to be computer tests? And some districts are not quite ready for computers. So all that needs to be worked out. But again, that's a positive. Doesn't have to be thrown out simply because you don't have the computers. We can work all that out. So I think that's a lot of positive things, but we've got to work hard to dispel the myths that destroy those things that are coming down the pipe before we even give them a chance. People are ready to destroy all those things even before we even give it a chance to succeed.
Anything from this side? Reagan's just plain exhausted. All right. Great. We are going to move on, then. We have some nice young people here, like Reverend Walker mentioned, from the Firestone Boys and Girls Cross Country Team. Can I have the coaches come up first? So the recent, they're the first of our City Series champs for the season, for our fall season to be recognized. These are Firestone's cross-country, both the boys and the girls swept to the City Series for which year was this?
Twelve.
Twelve years in a row.
Twelve.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
For 12 years in a row, the boys team has won, and the girls? This is our first year and I think our third year in the last five years. So definitely a legacy, for sure, with the boys, and a building legacy with the girls. So we wanted to have you out. So would you like to introduce them and have them come up?
I brought forerunners here, and they're all first-team all-city and all-academic all-city. And that's Darcy, Ido.
So you call, they're all-city for cross-country and also academic. When did you guys start running this year for the fall? When did you start running? You never stop running, I know, but just humor me. When did you start training?
The day after track ended.
So you ran all through the hot summer, right? So they ran.
That is Sam Michael. He's also first-time.
Sure, go ahead.
And Harley here outside of that standing season for us. He was our first regional qualifier in a few years, and he was one-tenth of a second away from making it to the state meet, which would have been the first time a male athlete's made it from APS since 2000. So he really set the bar pretty high for these younger guys and did a great job for us.
Do you want to introduce the girls?
We have five girls. Four of them are all-city, and I believe all five of them are all-city academics. Claire Maritz, City Runner of the Year, and then Emma and Abby Horr.
And the awesome thing is all five girls will be back next year. And you guys ran just as long, started running early in the summer. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Now, you are all more than welcome to stay for the enthralling meeting that this is sure to be, but since you are all-academic, all-stars, et cetera, I'm sure that you have homework. So if you would like, you can feel free to go as well. So we'll give you guys a few minutes if you want to, to get out if you want. Thank you so much for coming. As they're moving out, our first order of business is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from the October 27, 2014 meeting.
So moved.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? Hearing non-roll call, please.
This is Mansfield. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent?
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 40 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about personnel or comments? We do have quite a few retirements. I just wanted to mention our sincere thanks to all of those who are retiring. I particularly have to mention Laura Genomans. I'm trying not to get emotional. She was my band director, and I would not be married to my husband had it not been with Laura Genomans, who, there's a long story there, but I will just suffice it to say that when he got injured at band camp, she took very good care of him and stuck us together, and the rest is history. So I owe her a lot. So congratulations to her and to all of the retirees. Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
This is Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and two resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about consent? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
You're up.
Again, you know, I attended the OSBA conference this week, and a couple of things that piqued my interest. One was a presentation by Beechwood City Schools and University Hospitals on a medical academy in their district. I have wanted to have that here for quite some time, and maybe with some new ownership or partners in some of our local hospital establishments, we may see that as a reality soon. Another area, I was in the same session as Mr. Miller on career education, and we are actively working with some of our post-secondary partners to really align. You know, my thing has been to try and upgrade our career education program so they reflect more of the up-and-coming areas like advanced manufacturing. So look out for something along those lines soon. And another one, I was at a presentation a couple of Saturdays ago where I saw Mr. Bravo, and we have a group really led by Ed Gilbert and a couple of other ones, Attorney Ed Gilbert, and they do mentoring with some students at BOKTO. And one of the gentlemen in the group got the kids interested in drone technology, which is a big burgeoning business across the globe. And so I've reached out to Stark State to look at the potential for us having something like that here, again, in our career education program, because that's a big business in agriculture, in land planning, in use planning, where they'll use drones to take topographic maps of areas and look at development. So that is an up-and-coming business, and that's really what we should be looking at. You know, it isn't the same old, you know, career education programs that there were in my day, but we have to look to the future and things that will employ, you know, our students to decide to take that track. So hopefully, we'll be able to get something out of that as well.
As far as the president's report, I did want to talk about the fact that I know when we were at Capitol Conference, there was a lot of discussions about charter schools, and some of the questions that were asked of legislature, the legislature and of the state school board involved, well, we're for school choice. Well, I just want to say that at Akron Public Schools, we're for school choice, too, and we want you to choose us. So we think public school is a fantastic choice. And just as an example of that, I can tell you that I believe STEM Middle School and STEM High School, I think their open houses are tonight, and Miller South and Firestone just recently held theirs. I have the good fortune of getting to be at Miller South and Firestone. I happen to be, again, looking at our high school that all three of my sons will eventually attend. I'm looking at it, again, with fresh eyes. And it's amazing, if you think you know Akron Public Schools, you really don't necessarily even know the school your child has, one of your other kids has attended. If you go in with open eyes, my kids are all completely different. They all have different interests and going in. He came home from a career fair they had at Miller South today, where all of the career tech options, or several of them, 18 out of the 30-some that we have, I think, were there and had a whole new interest that I didn't even know that we offered at Firestone and had the other two boys go there. So there is a lot of choice in public schools and with public education and public teachers. So please, if people are out there thinking about it, take a look at those choices. I wanted to commend the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. Mr. Black was down. I got to see a presentation that he gave for the Capitol Conference. I know we had some, a group of special ed teachers that were down. I didn't get to see that. I'm not sure. Did you get to see that?
I got to. He made an excellent job.
Just representing our district so well, and I just wanted to thank the board. I talked, I got to know riding the shuttle bus. I met a young lady. It was her very first conference. She had just been elected to the Cincinnati School Board, and she was the only representative from their board that was there of the seven. And I just, I thought that not only through the hard work that some of you did, but also through being there and networking, and Mr. Pendleton was there as well, just did a fantastic job of representing our area and showing people that Akron is in the game to be one of the top districts in the state. So thank you all very much for all your hard work, those who held down the fort, like Ms. Balk, who kept everything working while we were all out of town, to everyone who went down and took time out of already busy schedules. So thank you very much for all of that.
And Ms. Porter, she was there, too.
Oh, that's true.
And Kathy McVay.
Yes, and Kathy was there. Yeah, we really did leave you all by yourself for a while. It was fine. Okay, good.
Of course, I wanted to mention the leadership of the board.
Yes.
I was just doing that.
Why don't you go ahead? Well, go ahead and do it, Patrick.
We all know how well Reverend Curtis Walker represents here, but to know that he's not only doing this statewide but nationally, but the Black Caucus recognized his leadership on Sunday evening at the Black Caucus Dinner. We're proud of you. And I don't say that because I like to suck up, but I say that because you truly represent so well and the wisdom and the guidance that you bring to not just neophytes like me, but throughout this whole entire state. We were, I think we probably were beaming, illuminating much more than you were. So we say thank you.
It's evident in every one of the 50 photos that we took.
So thank you for your leadership.
Reverend Walker is respected among all those people around the state. I mean, very well respected. That shows some good, how good we do here in the representation we have down through the state of Ohio. Thank you.
That is true. I can't tell you how many times I introduced myself to someone, and they said, "Oh, it's Reverend Walker and Bruce Alexander." And I'm like, "Yes."
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
No, I'm just glad to be associated with this board. I mentioned before, we have an excellent board. You probably knows when you sit in meetings and you're talking how a lot of boards are not as functional. They don't do the kind of quality work that we do, and that helps me as well as helping all of us do the kind of work we need to do. We understand the public education.
We had that discussion twice, and it is worth noting, I think, because I think on Sunday and again on Monday night, we had that same conversation. I'm so amazed at how blessed we are, and I never realize it until we go out of town. And then you meet some of these other boards, and they're so divisive, and they don't mix well with their staff, or they don't mix well with each other, or they don't mix well with their superintendent. We sat at dinner Sunday night with a young woman from another district whose board president was, she was going to feel the wrath from the board president because her board president didn't even want anyone from the board to attend OSBA conference, because they didn't feel they should be spending the money on that, or that they didn't have the money, or that, and it just, I'm so amazed at how blessed we are.
Yes, we are.
You're welcome. I know every time I see a guy from OASBO, he's telling me, "Oh, they have a great board, and they have a great board." It's like, "We paid you once and not enough."
Sorry. Must have overpaid.
Exactly. Give me some change.
All right. Thank you all very much. Mr. Powell, any committee reports? Oh, we do have some committee reports. We have legal, for sure. Anybody? We have a couple of things. All right. Why don't we start with legal?
I am reading for the first of three readings for approval, Policy 8660, which is a revised incidental transportation of students by private vehicle, and Administrative Guideline 8660, revised transporting the students incidentally by private vehicles. And this is the first reading of three. Thank you.
Yes.
As always, we'd like to just publicly thank some individuals and organizations that have made some donations to APS, assorted Halloween costumes from Lane Marceus for students at Finley CLC, miscellaneous school supplies from Debold to Community Relations, a skit of bricks and blocks from Matt Simpson at Ohio Beauty Cut Stone for the College and Career Readiness-
Career Readiness Program. A bass amplifier from Bridget McCullough for the APS Music Department. Ludwig percussion set and an Armstrong flute from Connie Bechtel at West End Golden Pond. A harmony guitar from Chris, or I'm sorry, Charis Thorcel. $25 from Megumi Ito for the purchase and repair of musical instruments. $175 from community music fundraiser from Kevin Smith, the Chair, for purchase and repair of musical instruments. $200 from Frank Colletta and $250 from Love Akron for Findlay Adopt a School Project. And this is the last two.
Great. Thank you so much, and thanks to all those folks. Anything else in committee? Any unfinished business? All right, under new business, I wanted to mention something that has come to my attention. I was approached by some ladies that call themselves the Alpha Jays. I believe they used to be secretaries for Jackson, or they used to work for Jackson School. And one of the things that they wanted us to consider as a board, and we're not going to vote on this tonight, I just wanted to bring it up publicly and so it can be considered. And that is, the school that we're building on the Jackson site is slated right now to be called Harris CLC. We've demolished the Harris School Building and we've demolished the Jackson Building. We're going forward with the Harris Building. What these ladies wanted us to consider was to consider making Jackson part of the actual building name. We had planned on building, naming something in the building after Jackson. My bad was that I saw it was named after Andrew Jackson. I assumed it was Andrew Jackson, the president. I didn't do a lot of homework on that, so I never really considered it. And the Andrew Jackson that it was named after was actually a former board member who was named after the president. So, that's where the confusion was. The precedent that they brought up with that was they brought up Central Howard, and they brought up Miller South. It's two times where we've taken buildings that had been separate and put the two names together and let them both stand. I think in general, as someone who grew up on North Hill, I think everyone that's over in that area already calls it the Jackson-Harris or the Harris-Jackson Building, just because it is a mix of both because of the kids that are going to come there are going to be from Harris School, but it's being built on the Jackson site. So, what I'd like the board to consider is possibly hyphenating the name and making it the Harris-Jackson CLC. So, we're not going to make, take any action on that tonight, but I did want you to take that under consideration. All right. Any discussion on that?
Definitely, they shared that with us during our, some of our open meetings last year. They were at the North Hill Library. We're very passionate about that. Makes sense certainly work. Investigating a little more.
Like I said, I kind of wrote it off that it was named after a president who probably had lots of buildings named after it. And with both names having a local connection, it makes a little more sense to me to keep both.
I would agree. I did look outside. His name is on past.
Is it? I looked him up.
So, who was Central?
That was, it was the Central School. It was based on location, kind of like north and west. Yeah. Okay. All right. Moving on, I do need a motion pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, Section 121.22 G1 and 2, to move into executive session for the purpose of considering compensation of an employee or official of the school district.
So move.
Moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes. Sorry.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.